Good evening and welcome to the twice monthly meeting Westminster's mayor and common council. During the public health emergency, we will be conducting our meetings virtually. And they will be available and streamed live on the city's Facebook page, as well as the Community Media Center channel and website. We'll begin as we do every meeting with the pledge to the flag, followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Copies of tonight's agenda and the entire information packet that the council will be using are available online on the city's website. First, we'll consider the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the meeting of the mayor and council on February 8th, and the closed session of that date, and the special meeting on February 15th, and the closed session of the same date. They have a motion for approval?
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
There is a motion by Mr. Dayhoff and a second by Ms. Gilbert.
Mr. President, I have a correction.
Mr. Cavaci.
So I believe, and I'm trying to frantically look for it on my tablet, but I can't seem to find it, but when I was reading them over the weekend, I noticed that in one of the motions, and I believe it was to go into a closed session, it was seconded by Councilwoman Albert. While I know she would be glad we're talking about her, she's actually no longer able to make a second, so I'm sure it was strictly a typo, but...
Sorry about that.
Yeah, that's okay. It's just we probably...
Yeah, I'll find it and change it.
Yeah, that was it. It's funny, as I was reading through it, I'm like, wow, Suzanne would love this, bud.
You must have been on my mind for some reason.
I'd like to move to approve the minutes as amended, changing Albert to Gilbert.
Thank you. Without objection, without objection, it is so ordered. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Opinion of the chair, the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And the minutes are approved as corrected. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci, for noticing that.
That's too funny. I think I did notice that.
I totally missed it.
No, I noticed that. It made me smile. I wanted to send it to Suzanne.
So now we'll move on to a moment that we've come to really enjoy and look forward to every year. And it's become a habit, and it's a very good habit for the city to be in. And so we have our good friend Tim Ellsworth with us. Tim is the executive director of the Local Government Insurance Trust, in which the city is a participant for many years. Tim, it's great to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. It's great to be here. I appreciate the invitation.
Sure, thank you. You have a presentation for us.
Yes, sir. I have a lot of really good news here tonight. First of all, I'll bring the check forward so it can be better seen. We've actually sent the actual check to you folks, but here it is. It's hard to see on this, but for $294,533, which is your health refund again this year, that you're receiving again this year. And since the city of Westminster joined the Legit Health Program, you've received over $2.5 million, which is an incredible amount. You're one of our best performing members, which means that you all, you use your employees, use their health benefit very carefully, which is good to hear. Overall, this year, we returned over $5 million. Now, some of that is due to the COVID lockdown and doctors giving up a lot of services or doing a lot of things online, but at the same time, this $294,000 is pretty consistent with the numbers you've got, you are all in Westminster have received in the past. In addition to that, if I may, just want to talk a little bit about your other situation that for the Legit Property Liability Program, of which you've been a member for many years. You all have, this current year, are getting almost $50,000 in credits and discounts because of your good experience. And I attribute that to all your employees, the hard working work that you're doing, and the leadership by you, mayor and council, as well as Barb Matthews, your city manager. Barb was a former member of our board and understands Legit very well, and we appreciate everything you do. And some of the things we do, other than provide insurance, which an ordinary insurance company would do, is we have an online campus, we have an employer employment hotline, as you can call Kevin Karpinski, one of the leading employment lawyers for public entities in Maryland. We do police training. We now have a police liability expert. We actually just promoted Matt Peter, one of our attorneys, into our HR position and are providing him assistance for internal work. But Matt will be as available to go ahead and do onsite employment consultancy as well. And then we do appraisals for you at no cost when you get new buildings, and then you receive $1 million in free coverage, among other things. But I do want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for belonging to Legit, both Legit and Legit Health, and it seems to be working for you well. And again, I appreciate your membership and members like you.
Again, thank you. It is working very well for us. Yeah, we've been not just pleased, but thrilled with the work that Legit does in our behalf. As we appreciate the savings, but we also appreciate all the other good work that Legit does. And we're just so happy to have been a long time participant. Thank you again. Thank you for the check. Thank you for the kind words. And we will look forward to seeing you again next year.
Yes, sir. Hopefully, we can do it live.
Yes, indeed. We'll look forward to it. Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
Great to have you with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. We have one item for approval on the consent calendar. May please have a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. There's been a motion to approve the consent calendar by Mr. Dayhoff, the second by Mr. Cavaci. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Opinion of the chair, the ayes have it, and the ayes have it. Consent calendar is approved. Now it's time for the report from the mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll try to keep this quick. One thing I wanted to talk about, we had a fiber meeting this morning. We've been working on the implementation of building to, you know, residences and businesses that are adjacent, budding, whatever you want to call it, to the city. And I think we made some good headway. Our council president put the builds into three different buckets that I think we all kind of felt were already there, but he clarified everything for us. And we solved essentially, I think, how to implement it for two of those, leaving the most complicated bucket of types of builds for us to work through as we go. But, you know, I think we worked out a plan on how to calculate cost of builds and so forth, so that we can, you know, kind of move forward in a actionable way. And, you know, that's really it. The only other thing I really wanted to bring up is that we're, you know, I know it's still February. And last year, we were kind of scrambling around in a couple of months, trying to figure some things out in terms of events that are held and ways to help with them for, like, you know, for high school graduations and so forth. Hopefully, by then, the situation will be a little different. But I do think that we should probably start talking about the possibility of having, you know, last year, I know they couldn't have parades, and we helped kind of facilitate, like, you know, a car concession type of situation. And I think it might be time, I got contacted by a couple of parents over the last few days, asking about stuff like that, because some of the schools don't have plans, you know, yet to do anything. So I think it's time that we start talking about them as maybe Plan Bs for now, but maybe to start to have those in place, because last year, we did that, but we did it as we went and last second, and we threw everything together in a week. And we could probably do a little better this year if it comes to, if it comes to that. So that's really all I have. I just wanted to give a little praise to everybody. I feel like everyone, you know, all the staff in the city are working extra hard right now, especially Public Works. We got a nice email today. And actually, you know, I should have forwarded that on to all the elected officials. I did forward it on to our director and deputy director of Public Works, but I'm just going to take a quick second and read that. "The citizen," I'll leave their name out, but they said, "I just wanted to acknowledge what a good job the city did with the roads. I had to go out for medical reasons Thursday, Friday, and today, Monday, mid-morning, approximately 9:00 to 12:00. I found the city roads in much better condition than the rest of the county roads every day. Thank you for that. It's much appreciated." And I've seen a lot of chatter online, and it's all been positive. I think we've done a really good job of clearing the roads. And like I said, last meeting, unfortunately, I think every time it snows, we get it cleared, right when it's done being cleared, it snows again. It's like timed perfectly. So I just wanted to give a shout out to and praise to Public Works Department and all the other departments that are dealing with snow nonsense. That's it, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, absolutely. You're right on that, Mr. Mayor. They've done a great job. And, you know, they just have to keep going at it every couple of days. Hopefully, this will be the last of it. Ms. Matthews, anything on the COVID report this week? I neglected to ask you earlier today.
No, there is nothing this evening, President Pecoraro.
That's good news. Thanks very much. So we'll move on now to reports from standing committees. Mr. Dayhoff, anything from the Arts Council?
No, sir, not this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yingling, the Economic and Community Development Committee?
No report at this time.
All right, thank you. Let me just share some with you on behalf of the Finance Committee. We've been working with the staff and have a proposed schedule of milestone dates for the FY 2022 budget process. And I just wanted to let you know that we've got a couple of Finance Committee work sessions coming up in March. In April, on April 12th, we are planning on presentation of the FY 2022 budget proposal and the introduction of the budget ordinance. The week of April 19th, we are planning on two budget work sessions during the course of that week. So we will have plenty of time to have a thorough discussion of the budget this year. We wanted to make sure everybody had those plans going. We'll be working with all of you to nail down those dates to make sure that it's a time that works for everybody. On April 26th, we will have the Budget Public Hearing, the second Budget Public Hearing, I should say, as well as the Constant Yield Tax Rate Public Hearing and Budget Work Session 2. So we'll be able to, you know, take another look at it after having received public comments on those items. And the plan will be to adopt the budget ordinance on May 10th. So if anybody has any questions on that schedule, I'm happy to discuss with you, you know, offline. We will make sure, as we go forward with this, that we are getting you materials in advance to review, so you'll have a chance to take a look at them prior to each of these meetings. So thanks very much to Ms. Matthews and Ms. Colston for developing the schedule. And we're looking forward to some very productive budget sessions in the next month.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Can we have those dates sent out to us pretty please, so I can...
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Sure. And again, we'll work with everybody to make sure we fill in the special meetings and make sure that we've got times that are...
I gather we don't do the budget memo any longer?
Well, we do things differently now. We've got a different process. That was something that we did, you know, galaxy far, far away, so...
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Personnel Committee, Ms. Gilbert.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Mr. Yingling, Public, I'm sorry, Mr. Cavaci, Public Safety Committee?
Just very briefly, similar to the mayor, I wanted to throw a shout out to our Police Department. I know they've been working exceptionally hard during these storms, dealing with things they don't typically have to deal with every day. You know, even things like people just getting stuck or falling and needing help. I know they've been responding to things like that. Actually, even right near my office today, a guy fell on the sidewalk, older gentleman, and next thing you know, there's a couple of police officers. They got him up and helping him and dealing with it. And they're doing those things all the time. So, you know, echoing what the mayor said about Public Works, absolutely unbelievable job. And then, you know, for the Public Safety Report, wanted to also thank the PD for the extra effort they put into this during these storms. Other than that, things have been very quiet. It's, you know, crime statistics continue to stay low, just like we like them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Public Works Committee, Mr. Yingling?
Yeah, Mr. President, a couple of things today. I know that, as you all know, we held a Public Works Committee meeting on Friday morning at 9:00 a.m. I'm going to go kind of out of order of the meeting. I know that probably one of the main topics we want to report out on is the citizen concern from the Colonel Roser Alley and the, you know, some property damage that has been going on there. But first, we talked a little bit about our water reuse project. That is really moving full steam ahead. I know Jeff and his team have, you know, they've got some tight deadlines coming up with the pilot. You know, it's been, the area's been selected, and I think they're going to be starting construction on it pretty soon, which is exciting. And then a good segue is the mayor and I, last week, received an email from a gentleman by the name of Jeff Fretwell. Jeff Fretwell, some of you may have remembered, was the legislative liaison to Secretary Ben Grumbles. He was instrumental in helping the mayor and I communicate with Secretary Grumbles about this project. He had sent, he sent us an interesting email that there is, I guess, the secretary was meeting with an organization called the Water Finance Exchange. They're a nonprofit that is partnered with, sorry, I'm reading the email, the Rural Community Pre-Development Fund, Rural Community Assistant Partnership, and a couple of other organizations to provide funding up to certain amounts for, to advance projects from conceptual phases to financial close. And he had said in here that the secretary was particularly mentioned, the city, because of our leadership on water reuse. So I'm going to forward that along to Mr. Glass. I don't know if he's on this call. If he's familiar with this, he might already be. But that was pretty neat to kind of see, you know, that we're still on their minds and that they thought about us as a community that could potentially benefit and qualify for something like that. So I thought that was, that was great. So now we'll talk a little about the Colonel Roser, Colonel Roser Alley situation. Certainly, anytime we have citizen concerns, we want to take them really seriously, which we have over the last three and a half years. Had a couple of meetings on this. I know our staff has been out and examined the alley. And, you know, obviously, we're always concerned about the safety, which I know the one resident, you know, mentioned they were concerned about safety. You know, and we had talked about potentially doing some sort of study there. There had been some ideas about closing that alley. And I'd said in the last council meeting, you know, we want to talk about this a little bit more, but any action or inaction that we're going to recommend is going to take into consideration all the stakeholders, surrounding residents, businesses, property owners, et cetera. So we, you know, our recommendations, you know, look, it's a difficult situation. And, you know, we live in a small town with small alleys, and you're going to have trucks that need to use the alley, alleyways. And I don't know that we're ever going to be able to solve, you know, that entire challenge, you know, everywhere. So this property damage that has taken place, you know, it seems to be somewhat of an isolated incident, that it's not happening every day that I know of, or every week, or every month. And I guess what we talked about was, you know, property owners, when they have damage, whether it's whoever it is, you know, they have recourse for that damage. So file a police report, you know, get the information, you know, and essentially contact people who have damaged the property, which I believe these property owners do have evidence, in fact, we've all seen it, of who has damaged this property. So I would say that, you know, there is recourse on their end. However, you know, we talked a little about potentially doing a traffic study on that specific alley, which the committee feels is not really going to solve, it's not going to solve all problems. Well, if we are going to do a traffic study, it would be our recommendation that we do a more comprehensive study in the downtown area. And we would, our recommendation is that we would forward this idea and/or discuss this idea. I think we've all had an appetite to do that in the past. I know Councilman Cavaci, President Pecoraro, myself, and the mayor have. And I don't know if we've talked about it since Mr. Dayhoff and Ms. Gilbert have been on the committee, but, you know, there is an appetite to study traffic in general throughout the town. So my recommendation would be that we, as the Finance Committee, want to look at, okay, what would that cost look like, and do we have the resources available? And I think the reason that it hasn't been done is, like any organization, especially an organization of our size, you've got, you know, 20 different things that all need to get to be done, but you only have so many resources that can be allocated to do it. So we were going, you know, we've got a $70 million wastewater project, we've got a reuse project, we've got, you know, a fiber fund that, you know, we've got to take a really good look at. And it just hasn't, you know, the big traffic study just hasn't gotten up on that list, which happens all the time, day to day in any organization. Regards to safety, you know, there was some concern about the safety of the alley, you know, and specifically the recommendation of closing Colonel Roser. It was the committee's feeling that, you know, closing Colonel Roser is going to have far more impact on safety of the surrounding areas, including pedestrians, because now you have potential vehicles that are going to be funneled onto the lot next to it, which could cause a safety issue for pedestrians, you know, visiting our downtown businesses. So that was the general discussion of it. So I guess just kind of summarize, my recommendations coming out of the committee are that we would forward to the Finance Committee the thought that we should really consider doing an overall traffic study throughout the entire downtown, and let's examine if those resources are available. And the closing Colonel Roser at this point is not in the best interest of everybody in the overall community, specifically from a safety aspect. And then also, I don't believe, the committee did not believe that that would solve all issues, because, you know, trucks can still go down Union Alley. Unfortunately, that building is located very, very close to the property line, as a lot of people's stuff is on that alley. You know, a lot of people have structures on that alley that are located close and could potentially be damaged by any type of vehicle. So those are our two recommendations. If Mr. Councilman Dayhoff has anything to add or the mayor has anything to add that I may have missed, please feel free to do so. That's the committee recommendation.
All right, Mr. President?
Mr. Dayhoff?
Yeah, we've looked at this pretty exhaustingly. The other, the other, the other idea that we've discussed in the past is that in my previous life, when I did property management in a situation similar to this, I would recommend to the property owner that they put strategically placed bowice in front of the garage. And I think maybe, maybe if we could convey that to the property owner, that would be a good idea. I think that would be in its best interest to do that. And I think it'd go a long ways to helping out with the situation. I'm open for some discussion, you know, as to whether or not my colleagues want to do a traffic study, a comprehensive traffic study. We discussed signage, no through trucks on Roser Alley. And I think Chief Ledwell brought up the unintended consequences with that. Seems like, seems like no matter, no matter what we try, there are unintended consequences that are fairly serious. I'm really sad that it's happening, and I would really like to do something. I know Councilwoman Gilbert and I have spent a good bit of time on the site. I imagine citizens were wondering why these two council members were hanging around in the alley staring at this building. But so I'm still open for suggestions. I'm not giving up yet, but I'd like to solve it.
Mr. President or Mr. Chair, I guess?
Mr. Dominic?
Well, I think the residents are probably pretty used to Councilman Dayhoff hanging around in alleys, but Ms. Gilbert might be, might be a new surprise. So, yeah, the only thing I wanted to add is that we really did flesh this out. We spent a lot of time on this, and, you know, some of the possible solutions were already mentioned, right? Like closing, closing the alley, there's some unintended consequences that we feel are pretty likely to happen if we do that. We could always do signage in terms of limiting certain types of truck traffic, but we know that that's hard to enforce. Enforcing that is going to be tough. But, you know, signage could deter a percentage of it. Some people are going to follow the rules, some people aren't. That could create an improvement, even if it doesn't create the total solution. The other things that were discussed were, you know, making it one way, which really doesn't solve a total problem. But see, the, one of the things that I think hasn't been brought up yet here is that the resident that contacted us about this has also contacted us about other things, about how, you know, cars will be coming from both directions and then have to back up. So that was another thing that, you know, we were looking at. Also, the snow plowing and where the snow gets laid, you know, coming from the alley, which kind of goes right into the garage. So there are all these other issues, and we're trying to figure out, like, if there's a way to solve them. And there's really, the real problem is that we have a small alley, and there's a garage or show, whatever you want to call it, garage inches from the alley. Like, I don't know the exact number of inches, but it's inches. It's right on the road. That's the real problem, and there's no real way to solve that problem. And everything else just seems like it's a bandaid that's going to cause another issue. So, so, yeah, we really, I just want to, I just put it out there that we really spent a lot of time talking about it in that meeting. And I've also had one-on-one conversations with people trying to figure out solutions, talking to both elected officials and staff and trying to work, you know, an idea out. And the reality is, I believe, is that it's not a great situation having an alley that's small. I mean, we've all, I think we've all driven on that alley, right? Like, I go there pretty often, actually, if you look where my work office used to be. That's, that was a way that I would come to and from sometimes, depending if I was getting, you know, takeout or something. So I was, I was there a lot, and I drive an SUV. And all the things that were mentioned are noted and agreed upon. But I just don't know if there's an elegant solution to this. And I feel like any measure that wouldn't cause any serious issue also doesn't solve any problems. So, you know, I think that, I think an overall traffic study is probably a good idea for multiple reasons. We've talked about truck traffic on Main Street. Also, another thing that's hard to, hard to enforce, but again, I think it's about maybe possibly deterrents. But I just wanted to bring up just how, how many options we discussed and how much we fleshed it out. We had the, our police chief and our director of Public Works there, you know, all trying to put our heads together, and it's just a really tough situation. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, whoever I'm supposed to thank.
Thanks for always welcoming everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President?
Ms. Gilbert?
So I wanted to thank you guys for addressing the issue. I have a question. Did any of you, because I think the main issue is, is the large tractor trailer trucks making that turn? At least on the videos that I've been seeing, that seems to be the major issue, not necessarily the car traffic or even closing the alley, but it's the height and the, the general huge trucks that are going through that alley, cutting the turn and destroying property multiple times. So why can't there be a sign, or as Councilman Cavaci and I have discussed, on, you know, options prior, maybe even a poll or something that can get put up to deter the height of the trucks? Something pretty simple and easy, I would think?
Mr. President?
Mayor?
A couple, a couple of thoughts on that. So first of all, I don't think the only issue is the turn off of Colonel Roser. The last time these residents came into our meeting to bring up this issue, they did say that it was a truck that hit their garage, but it wasn't, it wasn't a large commercial truck. And it wasn't coming off of Colonel Roser. It was coming down Union. And it was two people inside the truck having a literal fight while they were driving and hit their garage. So, so I guess we're looking at all of those, you know, all the causes. But they came in, you know, to the meeting to tell us about this so that we could help solve that problem. And that's one of the examples of things that I don't think we can solve unless you just shut the whole alley down. We can't keep a SUV or pickup truck, I forget which one it was, but it was a normal, you know, it wasn't a commercial vehicle from hitting the garage. So that's the one piece. The other piece, when you mentioned the height, one thing that, you know, I didn't, you know, I just, this is the first I'm hearing of that idea. But one thing that I, when I was doing research into stop signs and the overuse of stop signs and how that causes... and the overuse of stop signs and how that causes accidents and other issues, one of the things that I I did research on, and I'm by far not an expert in this, where they, you know, they talked about distractions. So I guess my question is, if we're going to put a height restriction on Colonel Roser, if it's too far into Colonel Roser, it's a one way street and and you can't back up. So it has to be at the front of Colonel Roser, which means we would have a height restriction right at Main Street, which is already, in my opinion, kind of a confusing intersection. I would be concerned about that causing issues on Main Street without knowing anything about it. You know, I I think that's something we should discuss with, with maybe staff, you know, police chief and the and our director of public works and see how that could be, if that should be considered. I don't want to cause a safety hazard to actual people like, like, you know, I mean, we have a lot of foot traffic and a lot of, I mean, we've, we've all been on that part of Main Street and that part of Main Street gets a little hairy, so. But that, that's my, that's my initial reaction to that. But I haven't done any specific research. But I do know, one of the reasons, you know, additional signage oftentimes causes issues is because it takes your, takes your eyes off the road and takes your attention off of what you're doing if you're turning in there. Likelihood of noticing that before you actually start making the turn, I feel is low, but that's just a guess. I have no data to back that up.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Yingling.
If I may respond to the height restriction. Yeah, Councilman Cavaci did mention that to me today when I kind of thought about it. And I now, now I sit here, I think about it. Well, I said, what, what does height? Because, you know, according to these residents, the issue is 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 the turn there. And I agree with the mayor, I don't, I don't think that is just the main issue. But what does height have to do with turn radius? For example, I mean, any of you who have, you know, you could have a box truck that's pretty, pretty tall. You know, it's not, not long like tractor trailer. So I don't necessarily think restricting height, like, I'm also not a traffic engineer, would have anything to do do with a truck's turn radius. The other part is, you know, if you were to, let's pretend like we did restrict height, how that have impact on, you know, emergency vehicles that we need to get down that alley? Even I was seeing the snowplows going around today, you know, they have those salt spreaders on the back, you know. So what impact is that going to have? I I think that, you know, that that the height may may just cause a whole nother set set of problems, you know. So that was just my initial thoughts on that.
Thank you, Mr. Yingling. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, if hearing nobody else, so we will, we will take the committee report under advisement. The finance committee will discuss recommendation of a, you know, traffic study to see, you know, what would make sense and we'll do that in consultation with the Public Works Director and the Police Chief to see, you know, what, you know, how they would want to scope something like that. I think, you know, it's a, it's a good point. When we think about the changes that are about to come to our downtown with the with the move to the new city administrative office building, with the projected development of the of the Stockdale property. You know, we are going to see, you know, some changes in the way people are moving around our downtown. And it might be worth, you know, taking a look at some of that to figure out what makes sense and at least have some idea of what we think the impact of that is going to be as those two projects are underway and become completed. So, so thanks very much for that recommendation. If is it, if there's nothing else on this, we will move on. Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, I just got a minute ahead of you, that's all, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then, we'll just go back then. And then finally, we'll move on then. Next committee report is recreational parks.
Yes, and that may no report this, this meeting. I'll defer to Director Gruber for a comprehensive report on recreation and parks opportunities.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight from the technology committee. I think the mayor touched on that conversation during his remarks pretty well. Move on now to council comments and discussion. This is when council members have the chance to raise any other issues that don't fall in within the scope of their committee reports. And so we'll begin with Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, Mr. President, I just, I didn't think it was appropriate during Mr. Yingling's report to debate or, you know, talk about the issue, but I did want to make a quick comment on it. First of all, I wanted to thank him for having that meeting. It's a little bit of a contentious issue and I appreciate the fact that he took it up. I agree with him wholeheartedly that we should be looking at a comprehensive traffic study. Obviously, financially, when finances permit that, hopefully sooner rather than later. I know him and I have talked for his entire term about truck traffic on Main Street. And unfortunately, as he said, it's just one of those things. There's a million things we'd like to do. We have to pick and choose what, which ones we can do. That was one that we haven't tackled yet. I'm sorry to see him go and not get that accomplished. I hope that in the future, we future councils will get that done eventually, but a traffic study, I think, would go a long way to it. I threw that idea out there about the height restriction strictly just as a thought, you know, but you're, you know, there's a million reasons you can't do things. Closing the alley, for instance, I thought might be a good idea, but there's a million reasons why that wasn't a good idea after we talked about it. And a height restriction may be problematic as well, but I just kind of tossed it out there thinking that could be one thing we could look at. It would be nice to keep large trucks from making a left hand turn there. I think that is part of the problem. I had no idea about the fighting in a, in a pickup truck and that's why they crashed into it. That's crazy. And you're right, we wouldn't prevent that with any action that we take. But I do think we should, we should continue to look at a solution as best we can to try to fix that problem. As well, I realize it is somewhat isolated, it's still a problem. And and if it were my garage, I wouldn't want to have it damaged by truck traffic. So I hope we can come up with a solution, even if it's as part of a larger comprehensive study. But I think we should keep looking at it. Hopefully, between Mr. Glass and the chief, they can spend a little more time thinking it through. And maybe they'll have an epiphany and come up with with the solution for us. So that's my council comment and discussion, Mr. President, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci, Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I want to echo Mr. Cavaci's remarks. And I I can't agree enough, if it were my garage, I would really want to see, it's a, it's a really neat garage. I would really, I would really want to, I'd like to try and do something for him. And and maybe, maybe, maybe a traffic engineer can come up with something and I'm up for that. I'm up for that discussion. The one discussion when we were casting about looking for solutions, the one idea that 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 I know I discussed was closing the alley and and that's, that's just not going to, that's not going to work at all, at all. So maybe the sign, I don't know, no through trucks? I mean, I don't know. Mr. President, I spoke with Graham Dodge the other day with Magic and we were talking about the autonomous cars initiative and I'm really excited about that. Maybe at some point in time in the near future, we can get a report from Mr. Dodge about that initiative. I think that's exciting. I think, I think that's what Westminster is all about. That's our reputation of being on the the cutting edge of stuff like that. So I would look forward to having that report. I have a 1929 Ford, maybe when we do some sort of a ribbon cutting or whatever, maybe we can have the juxtaposition of the autonomous car and the 1929 Ford there or whatever. But I think it's a neat idea.
Is that the one you wind up, Mr. Dayhoff?
No, you don't have to wind this one up. This one actually had a starter, which was a really big deal. Yeah, which is, which is a really big deal and has been the cause of some maintenance from time to time. I've wanted to go up to the street and borrow tools from Mr. Cavaci, but we, we, we turned it over to a mechanic recently. But the car is just absolutely fascinating. And I think the whole idea of juxtaposing, you know, the semi autonomous car that we're currently using to map out the 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 course for the autonomous cars and putting the 1929 Ford. I didn't talk with Mr. Dodge about that, we ran out of time. The mural, we're still working on the mural for the Diffin Doll lot and I'm really excited about that. I think that's another great opportunity for the city of Westminster as far as our environmental initiatives and our cultural and artistic initiatives. That's why people come to Westminster along with our trees. And I think we've got a lot of opportunities for murals in town. So I'm looking forward to seeing what it is that we can do with the Diffin Doll lot. And I still haven't given up, I still think that the grounds of City Hall would be great for a sculpture garden. So we're, we're, we're going to continue to work on a lot of these ideas. The last thing is, is when I was younger, I did snow removal. It wasn't, it wasn't a real fun activity for me. I just really take my hats off to the, my hat off to the the Public Works Department. They work a lot of long hours. It's difficult work, it's very, very difficult work. But it seems like our citizens really, really super appreciate their work and that's exciting. And I can't, I publicly want to thank them for all their hard work and all their long hours. They're spending time away from their families and and it's not fun out there, it's cold. And the the work is really difficult. I think that's my report, Mr. President, thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. I believe Mr. Dodge shared some information with us on the automated vehicle project the last time he was with us. And we'll certainly, we'll certainly get an update from him. I know that, you know, the mayor's had some conversations with him, I've heard from him and there were exciting developments on that front. So we'll, we'll look forward to getting an update from him very soon. Ms. Gilbert.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to thank the the Streets Department, they have been doing a tremendous job and echo Councilman Cavaci's comments that he far more eloquently presented than I did. I know if if that particular property were mine, it is frustrating to deal with the repairs, it becomes costly. And, you know, accident upon accident, no matter how the, what the cause is, it's still costly, it still increases your homeowner's insurance, it's, you still have to pay for the repairs. How brainstorm or get creative in coming up with a solution, I think that would be, that would be great. If that means looking at a comprehensive citywide traffic study, then so be it. But I would at least like to continue discussion in some way, shape or form. That's all I have.
Mr. Yingling.
Yeah, just some final thoughts about the the Colonel Roser situation based on everybody's feedback here. Yeah, I mean, looking at it certainly in a comprehensive way is something I would be in favor of. But in the meantime, you know, as I mentioned, to the recourse that the property owners have and maybe mitigation efforts, I would encourage them to consider putting up some ballards or some sort of barrier. You know, look, we've got people all across this alley, Union Alley, that goes all the way up to 31. And people have done things, you know, put big rocks. You know, I have that in my backyard, got a fence back there that sits pretty close to the alleyway. And so try to, you know, protect my property and mitigate it. So, you know, I would say that looking at this in a comprehensive way is definitely the best path. And just hopefully the residents will try to mitigate it some themselves. Certainly, you don't, I wouldn't want to have my property damaged either. But I'm going to take every step that I possibly can to try to prevent that.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on.
Greg, we were having trouble hearing you.
Sorry about that, just trying to wind the packet, there we go. All right, thanks. So we'll move on now to ordinance and resolutions. And we have one ordinance for introduction tonight, ordinance number 932, in ordinance of the Mayor and Common Council of Westminster, authorizing the disposition of certain real property known as the Winter's Lot, located at the northern quadrant of the intersection of West Main Street and John Street, Westminster, Maryland, 21157, consisting of lots 1297 and 1298, comprising collectively 10,714 square feet and approved and improved with a parking lot. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you, President Pecorera. As the Mayor and Common Council are aware, we currently lease space at 56 West Main, while the building is owned by Winchester West LLC. The adjacent parking lot at the corner of Main Street and Bond, which is referred to as the Winter's Lot, is actually owned by the city of Westminster. On July 31, 2018, the city renewed its lease for office space at 56 West Main. Section 11 of that lease, a copy of which was included in your agenda packet, provides for the city's sale of the Winter's Lot to Winchester West LLC upon the expiration of our lease agreement. The stated sale price in that lease agreement is $120,000. Ordinance number 932, which is before you this evening for introduction, provides for the disposition of the Winter's Lot and authorizes the mayor's execution of the associated purchase contract in substantially the same form as that included in your agenda packet. Terms of the purchase contract include a 44, 45 day study period by Winchester West LLC. It also provides for closing on the property no later than May 31 of 2021. So with that background, staff recommends that the common council introduce ordinance number 932. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Matthews. May I have a motion for introduction?
I'll move to approve 932, Mr. President.
Right, there's a motion to introduce from Mr. Cavaci and a second from Ms. Gilbert.
Thank you, introduce.
You're quite welcome. All those, is there any discussion or any questions from Ms. Matthews?
Mr. President, I have one, one discussion point. You know, I, I think this is a really good move on our part. You know, we're encouraging our downtown, you know, business owners and downtown building owners to continue to try to think of good creative ways for mixed use or or good uses of their property. 56 has been good to us. There was a quote where I was quoted in the paper. It almost sounded like I came off as disparaging to 56. And I just wanted to publicly comment that that was not my intention. I was really talking more about the inside and how we're using it and have it set up being kind of shabby, not the actual building itself. The building's a great building and they've been awesome building owners, the landlords, that the people that own the building have been great. So I wanted to, one, take this opportunity to, to, you know, make that comment. But number two, talk about why I think it's so important that we do this, because it really makes that building a lot more usable for them, having this parking lot as part of that property. And it's not necessarily a lot that we really need to to maintain or retain. It does, I think, it doesn't really give a lot of value to anyone other than the tenants of that building, which we happen to be at this time. And now that we're going to move out of there, I think it makes a lot of sense for us to get, you know, we don't have to maintain it, we don't have to plow it, we don't have to pave it, all those things. And they're going to get a lot of benefit from it, having a parking lot as part of that property. So I just, I think it's a really good move all the way around. It's beneficial for for all parties concerned. And I, I'm, I'm glad to see this happen, Ms. Matthews. Thank you for, you know, driving this through and getting it done. I think it's, it's a real good move.
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? I just want to mention, oh, yes, go ahead, Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, I, I, the, the history of this property is just absolutely fascinating. And I don't want to geek out at a time like this in the middle of a meeting to discuss the history of the property. But it's, it's, it's absolutely fascinating. It was part of the Grand Adam Farm. It used to be referred to in the history books as the space in between. It was the site of Mr. Davis's factory there. It was a part of an industrial, a very large industrial complex there for the city of Westminster. And I can't echo Mr. Cavaci's remarks enough. One of the things that we really haven't been able to tackle in recent years are all of the nonperforming properties that the city of Westminster owns. And we really need to, one by one, take a look at all the properties that we own. And if they're not performing, we need to turn them over to the private sector. And this was, I think it'd be important that we, that we move this property along. That's all, I just wanted to, I just wanted to turn the story and.
Thank you, Mr. Dayhoff. I'll just comment on some more recent history for that property. When I was, when I first joined the council, we had just, the council had just received and paid for a study called the Hyatt Palmer Study, which identified four key parcels in downtown Westminster. And that parcel was one of them, it was the old J.C. Penney's, for those of you who. And that parcel was one of them. It was the old J.C. Penney's, for those of you who remember, who have been around town for a while, that was the old J.C. Penney's building. And it was identified as one of the key sites that the city needed to make something happen on in order to try and keep our downtown alive. We're very pleased when the previous owners took on that site, developed it as office space. It was good office space for the city for many years, as Mr. Cavaci said, and as Ms. Matthews has often said. The landlords there have worked well with us and been very helpful, and they've been particularly good to us as we've been working through the challenges of getting the city administrative offices built. And so we appreciate all of that. Certainly, it will add to the value of the property for them to be able to get control of the parking lot there and help continue, you know, and hopefully help them as they go to market the building for new tenants, which hopefully the city will be able to assist them with as we make our move across the street. So I think it's, it's good to get this moving and to do it in a timely way so they'll be able to take control as we make our move, hopefully in the next month or so. So with that, we will plan on, see, this was just for introduction this evening, right? We will take this up again in our next meeting, I presume, and moving along. Very good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have one item of unfinished business discussion.
Have that vote, Mr. President.
Sorry? Oh.
You need to have the vote.
You're right. Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. I appreciate that. All those in favor of introduction, please say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. Opinion of the chair of the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And, you know, the ordinance is properly introduced and will be before us at the next meeting. Unfinished business, discussion of the Sustainable Maryland Program. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you, President Pecoraro. As you all likely recall, back in October of 2019, you had an initial discussion about the possibility of pursuing certification through the Sustainable Maryland Program. At your last meeting on February 8th, there was a desire to have this matter placed on your agenda again for further discussion. Just briefly, Sustainable Maryland is a collaborative effort between the Environmental Science Center at the University of Maryland and the Maryland Municipal League. To become Sustainable Maryland certified, a municipality must complete and document actions worth a total of 150 points. Those points must come from at least two mandatory actions and two of six priority actions. And the municipality must submit the appropriate documents as evidence that the program requirements have been satisfied. Included in your agenda packet is a kind of an overview of the various actions that a municipality can take to earn points. The first step in the certification process is adoption of a resolution stating the municipality's intent to pursue certification and designating a person to be the formal liaison in contact with the Sustainable Maryland Program. Included also in your agenda packet is a sample resolution. Once a municipality is certified, the certification is valid for three program years, and recertification is required prior to the end of the third year. As I recall, when you discussed this matter back in the fall of 2019, there were some questions about the amount of resources that the city would need to commit to pursue certification. As you probably noticed in looking at the overview of the program, there are a number of actions that the city already has in place, such as an employee wellness program. We have community gardens. We have a farmer's market. So there certainly are some activities that are just part and parcel of our, you know, current activities that would qualify for points. The two mandatory actions are the ones that would probably require a commitment of new staff resources or resources coming from somewhere. Those two mandatory actions that a local government must take include the creation of a green team. That can take a number of forms. That's primarily determined by each municipality. The other is completion of a green team action plan. And I did include in your agenda packet some examples of action plans that were filed by other local governments. So with that, I'd be happy to provide what information I can, but I think primarily this agenda item is a discussion among the elected body.
Very good. Thank you. Who would like, anybody wish to be heard?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
So, you know, I think all else being equal, all of us would certainly like to make sure that we're being good stewards of, you know, and, I think overall, the intentionist program is solid. To Ms. Matthews' point, when I look through this list, I, I mean, there's quite a few things I think we're doing already. Or if we're not doing them 100% to what the description is, it's really close. You know, some of the stuff under local economics, we're doing a lot of those things already. So I don't think it's a, it would be an insurmountable bar for us to reach or have to dramatically change what we're doing to potentially get the points needed. Other than, of course, like Ms. Matthews said, there is a couple of mandatory items. One of the things that I was thinking about was, as opposed to having staff manage this, would it be conceivable, I suspect we probably have some folks in the community that are probably pretty oriented towards this type of program and might be willing to volunteer some time to, to, to take this on and maybe be that green team. Now, I do realize there probably would be at least some need of a, of a staff liaison to have some role to work with them. But maybe that's, maybe that's one way we could tackle this would be putting together a, you know, committee or a, or a board or whatever we want to call it, like we do with some other things, and, and have a small group of citizens really play a role in helping us achieve this, you know, sort of, I guess it's certifications. Is that what it's considered? Yeah, it's certified. So just, just a thought I had. So throwing it out there. I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cavaci. Mr. DeHaas?
Ever since the days in which I worked on the city's landscape manual, I've always wanted to have an environmental committee in the city of Westminster. And I think we've come close to that on a number of occasions with our Plastic Bag Initiative and with the opportunities that we have coming up in the future with Wakefield Valley and B-City. When I look at the green team, I think maybe perhaps that might be the Westminster Environmental Council to take a look at what it is that we can do to move forward green initiatives with the city of Westminster. I'm extremely excited about Sustainable Maryland. I think it's nothing but good. A good thing for the city of Westminster. I think it's going to be greatly beneficial for our citizens to codify that, and I'm really looking forward to moving forward with this. What do we have to do next? What do, Mr. Pecoraro, Mr. Pecoraro, what do we have to do next?
Well, I think that, that's, that was going to be my question at the end of the discussion.
Yes, sir. Okay.
President Pecoraro, if I could just mention something?
Please do.
As a follow-up to Councilmember DeHaas's comments, there is an Westminster Environmental Advisory Board that is referenced in the city code. It was enacted in 1993 by ordinance number 573. I don't know when it went dormant. Some of you on the call probably have more insight into that than I do. It has not been active during at least my four plus years with the city.
Right. Hasn't been active for a number of years, but it is, it is in the books.
Hasn't been active since I've been in office that I'm aware of, and that's 12 years.
I recall a time when it was active, but to be honest, we haven't heard from them in quite some time and don't know where that is. And perhaps we can, you know, have a conversation offline with the mayor about, you know, the damages of restarting that.
Mr. Pecoraro?
Mr. DeHaas?
Could we have Ms. Matthews send us, I think I have it somewhere in the computer, but maybe, 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 maybe she could send us out a copy of that so we could all take a look at it. Rather, rather than me reinvent the wheel, she's already looked at it. Send that out because I know in my Sustainable Maryland electronic folder, I have it someplace. But that, I think that would be, I think that would be an exciting thing to move forward with, especially with B-City and, and the Tree City and some of the other exciting things that we're doing. I think it's the perfect niche for the city of Westminster.
Well, I was going to say, so we are now a B-City. We've been a Tree City. And we were talking about this, so I think that, you know, we should, we should give some thought to how we knit all those things together and, you know, see what makes sense to do that in a cost-effective sort of way. So that's, that's a task we can, we can take up and come back with some recommendations on. Ms. Matthews, is there anything we need to do at this point to, to sort of seal the deal on this for the Sustainable Maryland Program?
If, if the consensus of the group is to proceed, the next action would be to adopt a resolution. To, that begins the process to pursue certification. So if that's something the group is interested on, we can prepare that resolution and put it on one of your future meeting agendas.
All right. So I think that there's a consensus that we would like staff to do that.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, if there's no more on this, then we'll move on to new business. We have three items of new business. The first is approval of Warner Construction Change Order Number 23. For that, we'll turn to Ms. Matthews and Mr. Glass.
Thank you. This item is familiar to the Mayor and Common Council. Change Order Number 23. To the city's contract with Warner Construction provides for the installation of a revised sewage ejector configuration and connections, which staff believes will better serve the city's interest in the long run. As I advised you via email on February 18th, the work associated with Change Order Number 23 is a critical path item. Consequently, it was important for the city to authorize Warner Construction to proceed with ordering the necessary equipment at the earliest opportunity. With the concurrence of the Common Council, the mayor did execute Change Order Number 23 last Friday, February 19th, so as not to impede completion of the 45 West Main renovation project. That change order, however, does still require your formal approval. It has an associated cost of $4,775.83, and it did extend the contract time for completion by three days. If there are any, certainly any technical questions about the sewage ejector configuration, I'm going to defer to Mr. Glass. He's certainly much more knowledgeable than I am in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Anything you wish to add?
Other than sewage is my middle name, what I would offer up is the, the back of the napkin diagram that I put together on some page 105 of your packet that is a much simplified arrangement of what we need there at the sewage ejector system for the 45 building. And it looks like with this additional change order cost, that's, that's what we'll end up with. So I mean, unless there are questions, that's really it in a nutshell.
Are there any questions from Ms. Matthews or Mr. Glass? All right, hearing none. Are we ready to approve proceeding with the change order? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed say nay? Opinion of the chair of the ayes seem to have it, and the ayes have it. All right. So Ms. Matthews, let's go ahead and get this done. All right, thank you. Next item is a discussion of the Infinite Love Project's Be Kind Initiative. And we discussed this once again at a previous meeting, so I guess this is really a sort of unfinished business too as well. Ms. Matthews, you want to update us on where we are with this?
Certainly. This topic, I believe, was first formally brought before the Mayor and Common Council on October 12th of 2020 during Mr. Dodge's presentation to you as part of his quarterly progress report to the Mayor and Common Council regarding Active Magic. While this is not directly a magic activity, it did come up during the discussion. And Mr. Dodge subsequently sent an email to the Mayor and Common Council providing additional information regarding the Be Kind Initiative. In his email, he did outline certain desired actions on the part of the city. Copied on Mr. Dodge's email were Eric Hyde Miller and Tina Thomas, who are co-founders of the Infinite Love Project, which is part of, part and parcel of the Be Kind Initiative. A copy of that email thread is included in your agenda packet. At your last meeting on February 8th, Councilmember Gilbert requested a discussion of this matter be placed on your meeting agenda for this evening. And so with that, I believe this is mostly a discussion among members of the elected body.
All right. Thank you. So does anybody have a direction they'd like to propose that we go on this?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
So I have a couple, I guess, a couple of points to be made. I think it's really, I think it's really neat what they're doing. I think these signs are all over the place. In fact, I was on a large Zoom call with a lot of people with McDaniel College for an internship program that I'm involved with. And I ended up getting in a subgroup in that video call, well, with the founders of this. And one of the students who isn't, you know, isn't from Carroll County, started talking about where they started seeing the signs and how, you know, how far out it's getting. And it's, I think it's a really good product, really a project company movement, however you want to classify it. So I'm, I'm interested in this. I think it's a good message. I think it has a lot of merit. One thing that is a possible negative that I don't know if anyone's thought about is the fact that, you know, this is a commercial endeavor. So if we, you know, use this as part of the city's identity, we wouldn't have total control over that as if, you know, as if, you know, if we, if we went out, if we wanted to redo our identity, our slogan, however you want to word it, and we, whether we did it ourselves or hired a marketing or consulting company to help us with it, we would own that. We would be able to control it. With this, I don't have any serious concerns with it, but I just, in case people haven't thought of it, I think it's something that I wanted on people's minds when they, you know, when we made a decision is that there could be something that, you know, becomes part of Be Kind that isn't something that represents the city's stance on something or, or, you know, et cetera. So I'm not going to sit here and try to think of all the ways that could happen because it's, it's, well, for the lack of a better term, infinite. I believe it's called the Infinite Love Project, right? The Be Kind signs. So that's just one thing to consider, right? Like, do I, again, do I have any major concerns about it? No. I just think it's something that we should all think about before we make a move.
So if I may, you know, I've really enjoyed seeing the, you know, the progress that these folks have made in getting this message around. It's, it reminds me very much my father, who was a school principal in this county for many years, was well-known for signing all of his memos and letters to parents and the teachers and everybody else. At the end of it, he would always say, "Be Kind." And so as soon as I saw, started seeing these signs around town, it took me right back to seeing that from my dad. So I, I've enjoyed that personally. Mr. Dodge did, you know, make that presentation to us, as Ms. Matthews mentioned. You know, I was intrigued by the idea. I think it's worth bringing it up. I'm not really sure exactly what the best way, if there is a way, you know, for the city to do anything with this. So let me suggest that rather than try and solve this problem now, you know, let's refer this to a committee. I think perhaps the Economic and Community Development Committee could take a look at this. And if anybody else would like to, you know, to think about it and have suggestions, we could do that. But let's, let's, let's think about it and talk with staff. I know that, you know, you know, our city attorney has, you know, has, you know, asked some questions about, you know, what this would look like as well. And I think they were legitimate concerns that were raised. So let's take a, let's take a look at this and see if there, there is an opportunity for the city to do something with this. You know, certainly lots of, lots of elected officials and others have, and public officials have have spoken about kindness in the past. You know, certainly President George H.W. Bush, you know, tried to promote a kinder and gentler nation. I don't think that that was very successful, given the state of things today. I know that in Howard County, former county executive worked with some citizens group there to promote civility, which I think is a very similar concept. And I'm not, you know, I know that I saw a lot of bumper stickers, but I'm not sure how far they go with that. So let's take a look at this. Let's see if there's anything that makes any sense. And if we can come up with any ideas that seem concrete enough to, to be worth having the council consider, we can bring that back. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Mr. President?
Mr. Cavaci?
I, I do, and I won't, I'm not on that committee, so I won't have input there. But the one thing that I, I thought maybe, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, and I do appreciate what the mayor said. You know, we do want to be careful there not to get ourselves entangled in something that we shouldn't be. But by the same token, I entangled in something that we shouldn't be. But by the same token, I do believe that there was some talk about the fact there would be no request for licensing, or it would, we'd have unfettered use of it by the, i- i- if it's even trademarked, and I, I, I don't even know if it is or not. But I, I, one of the things I was thinking is, at least to start, if nothing more, we could just, uh, make a resolution um, that, you know, we're considering this i- i- an official slogan of the city of Westminster, and maybe put some language in it that coincides with kind of what their project is talking about. Basically making it official that we do support it, um, and, and that we are behind it. Um, I, I think that might be a good first step because I think, to your point, a lot of us are very supportive of it. I've, I've got one of their signs on my office building and one on my house. So, um, certainly I'm, I'm in favor of, of what the message they're trying to get through and uh, may, maybe a resolution with some language in it that's appropriate would be a good first step.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dayhoff.
Oh, um, I'll defer to Mr. Yingling. He was in front of me.
I'm sorry, I thought it was you.
Don't do that to me. Um, no, I'm happy to take it up in the, uh, Economic Community Development Committee. Um, the initial thought I had, which maybe our city attorney would have, uh, first off, I love the Be Kind. Like, I love the slogan. Like, I, I echo what all you all said. Um, I guess my only thought is like, uh, you know, having the city like kind of, it, I mean, endorse like a commercial enterprise and then, you know, y- y- you know, them potentially you, you know, using it, say, well, you know, the, like, using our name to essentially promote their product. I don't know how that loo- how that would work with the city. I mean, how do we give the, you know, how do we select somebody to do that with somebody and then not? So, um, that's just my initial thought. But maybe it's not an issue, but, uh.
I think that's part of what we need to discuss.
Happy to talk about it in committee. Yeah, no problem.
That's exactly why we need to give it, uh, some consideration. Mr. Dayhoff.
I like the idea of Mr. Cavaci's, uh, that maybe we pass a, a, a resolution, um, uh, thanking them for this initiative. I mean, I, I mean, I think anything that we can do to promote civility and to promote kindness is extremely important. Um, I have a number of the signs. I purchased a number of them for Christmas presents um, and Hanukkah presents. I mean, I, I think it's, I, I really like the initiative. Um, but, um, I, I guess we just need, need to be careful. I, I like the idea of a resolution. Uh, my thoughts went to, I, I would love to do it in addition to the murals and the sculpture garden. I would love to do something with community art. And I kept thinking of, I kept trying to think of maybe having a, a brainstorming session with, um, with Ms. Gruber and see if we, and, and, and Ms., uh, and Ms. Gilbert to see if we can, you know, figure out some sort of a community art angle to this. Um, the problem with city government is, um, all the unintended consequences. And I just don't want to, I just don't want to step in a pothole down the road. You know what I mean?
Right. And that's, and that's why, yeah, I think rather than try and discuss it any further this evening, the best idea is to move it to committee, give it some serious thought, and to be able to come back with, uh, with a report. So without objection, we, the ideas referred to committee and, uh, we'll bring it back at the appropriate time. Um, next item on the agenda under new business is the vote to go into closed session. Mr. Cavaci.
Yeah, Mr. President, good news. This is a really short one as opposed to the one that I read that takes, takes me twenty breaths. Um, under the statute authori- under the statutory authority to close a session under the Maryland Annotated Code, General Provision, Article Three-Dash-Three-O-Five-B, would like to consult with counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter, specifically under Three-O-Three-Dash-Three-O-Five-B for a staff update on an easement.
All right. Thank you. Um, motion by Mr. Cavaci. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Dayhoff. All those in favor say aye.
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 Does opposed say nay? The opinion of the chair, the aye seem to have it, and the ayes have it. And, uh, the motion is adopted. We're going to close session at the conclusion of the regular meeting. Now it's time for departmental reports. Ms. Matthews.
Thank you. I'd first like to, uh, see if Councilmember Dayhoff has any report he'd like to give on behalf of the fire department.
Not, not this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I'll now turn to our Director of Finance, Ms. Colston.
Good evening, Council President and Councilmembers. Uh, as you mentioned earlier in your finance committee report, we are, uh, deep in the budget process and working hard with department heads and staff to, um, get the budget document ready for our first finance committee meeting. And I'm looking forward to, to, um, having that with you. I spoke with, um, meeting, uh, members from the audit firm, and they have assured us that we will have a final copy of the audit in our hands on Friday. Uh, and we will get that distributed to you guys all, um, accordingly. Um, with that, that would conclude my report.
Thank you, Ms. Colston. And I believe you're working on getting a, the presentation of the auditor scheduled for March sometime?
Yes, they were looking at March eighth.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. Davidson.
Good afternoon. As I, uh, reported in the past, we was planning on moving the city infrastructure this Friday, the February twenty-sixth, uh, to forty-five West Main. That's not going to happen at this time. It's been moved to, uh, March fifth due to some unseen circumstances of, uh, some sickness that overcame us. Um, so we're gonna move on March the fifth. Uh, if everything goes well, uh, we're hoping for a six-hour outage for the city network, but, um, we should be back up from that six-hour timeframe. That's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Mr. Depa.
Good evening. Uh, back on February the twelfth, the Planning Commission did approve the CFT Plaza site plan. Um, we also had a new member, Tyler Cod, uh, uh, was at the first, had his first Planning Commission meeting. And we did have an election for a new vice chair, and Linda McNulty will be taking that position. The, uh, I don't have really anything else that, we did, I'm sorry, we did meet with, uh, Starbucks, uh, um, uh, there have been concerns with, uh, vehicles backing up into Route one forty. So we are working with them on a redesign of their site, and we're working the state highway on that design as well. And once we have something, um, I'll be working with Jeff and Chief Ledwell as well with that design. And that completes my report.
That's good news. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Depa. Mr. Glass.
Uh, just a few, uh, updates on some projects that we have working on. Um, the Inflow and Infiltration Project is, uh, right now in the permitting stages. Uh, they're also, um, sending in material submittals and, and ordering, uh, materials at, at concurrently. Uh, the next project is the storm drain, uh, lining system. Um, they were supposed to, to mobilize today, but, uh, due to the weather, that's going to be pushed back a little bit, but, uh, uh, should be doing installation this week. Uh, with regard to the parking garage rehabilitation, um, they were initially, the contractor was initially supposed to, uh, to be on site on March first, but, um, again, due to weather and, uh, et cetera, they were pushed back on some of their, um, remaining work before us. And so now they'll, that'll be, uh, they'll be on site on March eighth. Today, we had, uh, a pre-construction meeting for the Difundoll retaining wall. And then this Thursday, we'll have the kickoff meeting for, uh, for the Well-Aid PFAS study. That's, that happens Thursday. And then lastly, I guess, is, uh, this whole issue with, uh, with how much, uh, snow and ice we've been getting. It seems like this weather systems have come with, uh, indrubs and drabs, and that's almost the worst way that we could get it. It would be much cheaper for us to have one, uh, one large event. But, uh, as we speak, we've, uh, gone through about fifteen hundred tons of salt so far this year. Um, and by comparison, last year, we, we only used five hundred and sixty or so. So, uh, a- again, we were talking earlier about, uh, um, the budget and, and some of those numbers. And, uh, at that point, we hadn't used a whole lot of salt, but, uh, boy, that changes, uh, seems like in the, uh, overnight almost. And, uh, and of course, we still have, uh, another week of February to go, and March historically gives us a larger snow as well. So, while I won't take responsibility for the weather, I guess I will take responsibility for trying to, to minimize its, its effects on us, though. That's all I have. Unless there are questions.
Thank you, Mr. Glass. Ms. Gruber.
There we go. Good evening. On Friday, we announced, uh, save the date for our hybrid wine stroll event, and I am happy to report that, uh, the social media impact of that announcement went very well. Um, we have, according to social media right now, one thousand two hundred people interested in going. And of course, we know that we can't actually accommodate all of those people. Um, so, but we were happy to see brisk interest in the announcement. Um, it was shared forty-three times and fifty-one people responded to the Facebook post saying that they were going. The tickets will go on sale tomorrow morning at seven AM, so we will see um, how many people actually commit to their social media responses. On or before March fourth, we will have our camp registration ready to go live and begin taking registrations for our camp season. We had to work out some additional details in our registration system um, so that we're making sure we're complying with all of the state guidelines to operate a safe COVID, um, camp. And so one of those things is new for participants this year. They will be required to sign up for a two-week minimum so that our group size and consistency of children remains the same for longer than a five-day period. So it would remain the same for a ten-day period. Um, and on March third, we have our final Wakefield Valley Master Plan meeting coming up. We announced that about a week ago. And, um, we have around twenty-one people signed up for the six PM session. I'm sorry, we announced that meeting about two weeks ago. We have twenty-one people currently signed up for the six PM session, and eight people signed up currently for the seven fifteen PM session. I do anticipate receiving draft materials from Pinoni and Associates by the end of this week, at which time I will share them with the council for review and comment. Um, lastly, our response to the Celtic Cantor registration remains brisk. We have approximately three hundred and fifty, over three hundred and fifty runners currently signed up for that event. And those items conclude my report unless there are questions.
Chief Ledwell.
Good evening. So I wanted to mention that, uh, Rape Crisis Intervention Service of Carroll County is going to be sponsoring a virtual pandemic-friendly Walk a Mile in Her Shoes on April tenth through eleventh of this year. Uh, we'll be pushing out information on our social media regarding the event in support of survivors of sexual violence. Uh, we did have a pedestrian who was struck by a vehicle while crossing one of our crosswalks. We have been beefing up our enforcement operations at crosswalks. And we're also pushing out educational, uh, videos and flyers on our enforcement operations. We are using our stealth speed sign to gather data to help guide us to, uh, particular crosswalks, um, uh, during particular times of the day. And we're also going to be placing that same speed sign with the visual speed feedback at selected crosswalks. But just a reminder to drivers, the, uh, Maryland law requires that drivers yield to pedestrians once they're in the travel lane at a crosswalk. It's the driver's responsibility to yield to the pedestrian. And also just a, uh, friendly reminder to pedestrians to make sure when you're crossing the road not to be looking at cell phones or otherwise being distracted um, and to, um, anticipate that the vehicle sees you ahead of time. We're also preparing for our annual award ceremony in March, as well as the Leadership Carol Justice and Law Day. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Chief. And last but certainly not least, our Director of Human Resources, Ms. McCullough.
Good evening. Uh, nothing to report for the Human Resources Department this evening.
Thank you. I believe that concludes staff's reports. Certainly, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the mayor and common council have.
Are there any questions from Ms. Matthews or her staff? All right. Thank you very much. The final item on our agenda is citizens' comments. When we invite the public to address the mayor and council on any issues that pertain to tonight's agenda or any other city issues. During these virtual meetings, we will invite comments to be sent to our city clerk at comments@westgov.com. Commenters should include their address and phone number with their comments. At this time in every meeting, I will read out all the comments we have received. And, uh, I can report that we have received none since the last meeting. And so that concludes our agenda for the regular meeting, and it concludes the meeting. And with that, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Stay safe and stay warm.